Meeting of the Grants Subcommittee. I declare the meeting open and I invite everyone to stand to say the opening kadakia.
Saka takataho, ki turu. Saka takataho, ki ti tona. Kiamaa, kina kina, ki üta. Kiamaa, tarataki tai.
Welcome along everybody and just note that this meeting is being livestreamed on YouTube. Do please councillors let Democracy Services and myself know if you need to leave the meeting. And there will be some morning tea in about an hour. In terms of apologies, we have apologies from Mayor Foster. Are there any other apologies? No? Alright, I move that the apologies be accepted. Do I have a second? A thanks, Tam. Councillor Paul, all those in favour press one. If you're against, press no. That's great, thank you. That's carried. Conflict of interest declarations. Do members want to declare any conflict of interest declarations? Councillor Pennett?
Just as discussed, Boothright Wellington. Thank you.
Any other conflict of interest declarations? No, thank you. Alright. Confirmation of the minutes of the previous meeting? I move that we approve the minutes of the meeting held on 17 March 2021. Do I have a second? Councillor Matthews, thank you. All those in favour, please press one. Lovely, thank you. That's approved. We'll now move on to public participation and we have Stephen and Natalia from DCM. So please do come up to the table. Good morning, it's nice to see you here. Now you have 10 minutes and if you'd like to leave any time for questions, please do so.
Kia ora kauta katoa, ko Stephen takuingoa no ota tahia hau, ko naitahu teiwi. Naamahiniu, naamahiniu kia kauta katoa. Firstly, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to come here today and participate. My name's Stephen Turnock, I'm the recently appointed director at DCM. I'm also obviously joined here by Natalia Cleland, who's a senior leader with us and manages our outreach service. We'd like to express our appreciation, the opportunity to be here today, talk about our application, but more importantly, we appreciate the support that Wellington City Council has provided to DCM. And believe it's important to be here to respond to any questions, thoughts or suggestions that the committee may have of us. Although I'm relatively new to the Wellington environment, I come with 20 years' experience working in the social sector. During this time, I have continually witnessed and been part of silo approaches to major social problems based within many communities throughout the country. This approach has been proven to be, at times, ineffective with limited long-term outcomes. The approach DCM has in regards to ending homelessness is a collaborative approach. This approach utilizes a wide range of service providers, organisations and entities within our local communities who work collectively together, and that includes Wellington City Council. And we work together throughout the homelessness continuum. So this is a continuum that not only includes not being in a home, it's a continuum through mental health, through health, through community perceptions, education. So through our collective approach, we all partner to work for that continuum. And we believe that the sustaining tenancies application and the outreach application are crucial parts of working. In fact, it's been demonstrated to be one of the most effective in terms of not only identifying those who are homeless and rough sleeping, but supporting them into homes and maintaining those tendencies for long-term sustainability. Although I've got to admit, I feel as I'm preaching to the choir. And it's been obvious in terms of my learning since coming here, that this approach has actually been a long approach held between DCM and partnership with the Wellington City Council, and I acknowledge that. In fact, I believe this is a model that could be held up in many other communities that I've been working in terms of that collaboration and the recognition of a social conscious led by the Wellington City Council. I appreciate your time is limited and our application clearly outlines what we are requesting and the way in which we are looking at delivering our services. So I'll hand you over to Natalia now, who will be able to provide some stats and such in terms of what's happening in the environment for us at the moment.
Yeah, Kia ora. Thanks Stephen. Yeah, I mean, I just wanted to also say thank you and highlight maybe some of the stats that we put in our proposal and update with a few bits and pieces more recently. So our outreach team engaged with sort of over 600 people last year. We had over 600 visits to the community, so some of that's following up on notifications and some of that's just general walks around, sort of looking for people who are less obvious or haven't, we haven't had notifications about. This year to date, we've had over 100 notifications from the public about people who are rough sleeping and street begging. We're spending a lot of time in Johnsonville and Tawa because we're kind of responding to the needs that are being raised there by the community and obviously a lot in Kilburny and Newtown and the CBD. So, you know, the need, the numbers of people we're seeing visibly rough sleeping appears to be declining. I would say that's a direct correlation to having emergency accommodation. So people have moved into another homeless setting, but that's not, as we know, a long-term solution. And actually, the dynamics that people present in those emergency accommodation places mean that often some of them are back on the street. A couple who are outside, you know, Whittcoals and have been for a month are a classic example of that. So there's, you know, there's dynamics that mean that people move through homeless settings and I guess I'm just trying to evidence that there's still a need for this type of approach. Yeah. And hopefully we've seen a couple of, do we have those? We've got some great good news stories anyway. There's some great stories on our website. One recently about Meeta who came through the outreach service into transitional accommodation with a partner agency, into housing first, is now housed. She's part of the community in Berempor and she's actually sort of leading some community engagement work with DCM and her community and she's just enrolled to do some study. So it's, you know, there's these real success stories in there as well, which keeps us going. Yeah.
So Kia ora, I guess before we finish, I just wanted to highlight that our funding request has increased for this round from previous rounds. Size of service and our service capability has not grown. In the past, DCM has invested quite a proportion to deliver these services. However, we wanted to reflect the true cost of delivering both outreach and sustaining tenancies. And also in terms of our strategic plan moving forward, we would like to continue to build contributing services to, in terms of the continuum I spoke about. So these are services, health services, connected to programmes, harm reduction, et cetera, et cetera. We feel as though our tahapi experience, that can be a direct contribution towards ending homelessness within that continuum. So Kia ora.
Thank you so much for coming in and thank you so much for the work that you do in our city. It's critically important and more important than ever. And we do have a couple of questions. Councillor Pennett?
Kia ora and lovely to meet you. I was on the board many years ago, so I wonder, and my parents were too. It's a wonderful organisation. Just two questions. First of all, there is a shortfall in terms of what we're offering to give you, so I was just wondering how you'll meet that shortfall? Is it just again getting donation and doing fundraising? And the other thing is, you might not have been around in Wellington, but a few years ago, we decided to end homelessness by 2020. And we obviously didn't see COVID and possibly we should have seen the housing crisis. But I'm just wondering where you're feeling things are at and do we need to set another goal? Thank you.
Certainly. So that's in regards to the Mahana Strategic Leadership and Ending Homelessness Plan. Yes, I have been part of that group and I guess in terms of DCM, we can see the impact that COVID has had and we can also see the impact in terms of the shortage of housing is currently having. I guess for us as an organisation, we are looking at utilising what is available for us to access really. So we're building up a, I guess you could say, a great relationship with a number of private housing owners and we see that as the opportunity to actually increase housing. Although some would say that's decreasing it for other sectors. For us, it's about looking at what are the solutions for this time. So I guess until there's more houses, as my previous director had said, this will remain. Yes.
The shortfall?
Oh, sorry. Yes, yes. We're committed. We're absolutely committed to these services and we will make it work through our fundraising.
Yeah.
Yes.
And Councillor O'Neill?
Kia ora, thank you for your mahi. My question was similar to Councillor Pennett's around the full cost of the program being sort of looking like 700k. Why has DCM asked for a little bit less than that and what's kind of your thinking around the partnership there or yeah, what more can we do to support or?
Sure. So in terms of our previous applications, why we've asked for less at that time?
Within this current application, if we're unable to fund the full programme, sort of, why?
Sure, sure. I guess from my perspective, and I'll say this was the first application I've ever seen since arriving. I came from the perspective that it's important that we see true costs of delivering services. So that was the perspective I took here. I always recognise that gaining that was not a given. So we've planned to, well, we're in a position to fundraise and through donorships to ensure that these services are delivered. I'm very comfortable with that because as I guess I spoke about earlier, that relationship and partnership between ourselves and Wellington Council has proven to be very effective and really highlight the importance to ensure this carries on.
Thank you so much and thank you for coming in. I just want to send a really key message that the relationship with you was very important to this council as well. So yeah, thanks so much for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And do we have Nia Afoa? Good morning and welcome. And you're going to talk to us about the polo ground? Yeah? Fantastic. So you've got 10 minutes and if you do want some time for questions, just within that 10 minutes would be great. Thanks, Nia.
Tena koutou, hemehi mahana, ki a koutou. Ko nieta kuingoa, no reira, tena koutou, tena koutou katoa. So greetings to you all and acknowledging of all of you here today. My name is Nia. I am here today to speak on behalf of the two clubs who as of last week became an incorporated society. So we feel like we're actually ticking off some of those milestones. I thought today, obviously we've put in a grant request, so we know we're here to talk about $300,000 that will contribute to a broader project, which is to upgrade our home and your building essentially. I thought a good way to possibly proceed here was to tell you a bit about us and also tell you why we feel that we're deserving of this fund. So who are we? We are Oriental Rongatai Rugby Club, a strong club within the clubbing sector. I'm sure most of you have heard of us. If not, you wear possibly one of our jerseys. We're also Miramar Softball Club, a very proud softball club that's been there for many years and strong amongst the softball community. Over the last probably seven, eight years, we've also become a netball club who have been functioning under the banner of Oriental Rongatai Rugby Club. All clubs are as of today, very strong in their membership. We have maintained our numbers, if not we've at least increased one team since last year, which in a COVID space, that's probably quite a good thing to be able to do. So we are functioning currently with Ares having five senior rugby teams, 10 junior teams, including our nursery and Miramar Softball, that's three senior teams and five junior teams. And they're each growing slowly but growing. So that's progress for us. Our netball club, we went from originally two teams to four teams, six and now seven. So that's happened literally incremental over the years. So we're definitely heading in the right direction. We have been reaching out to our community, finding out who else might be interested and sharing our facilities with us because we recognise that obviously pulling resources and having a building that's not sitting around empty is the right way to go. A lot of the reason in terms of why we got there is because the two clubs over the last 10 years have been in those conversations. So this isn't something that has happened over the last couple of years. We've been in this for the long game. And part of that long game has really been looking at why we wanted to do this. And yes, you know, we tick all the boxes in terms of meeting the funding requirements for upgrading this building, but realistically, the building is the shell and it's the internal part. We've actually started this journey thinking it was going to be about getting a new building out of this, but really it's actually been about understanding our culture within our clubs and realising that we needed to change that culture from within. And that is very much so because sporting codes, they don't like to play nicely with each other. You're probably used to that. So we had a lot of work to do in that space. So we've been doing workshops with the clubs involved. We've been getting everybody onto the same page and working in the same direction. So we acknowledge that we've been doing a lot of work on our end and we wanted to make sure we did all that upfront work before we actually even came to council with a proposal. So we've been seeing what's been happening out in the market. We've seen what Tua Tūpaniki have done and out in Johnsonville. And I feel that we've actually probably done half of that work ourselves and I think we can be really, really proud of that fact too. So we've come to the table feeling that we're not just cap in hand, but we've got a lot of substance behind us. We know we've got a lot of passion and we've got some really good people behind us who are part of this project, who have all contributed to these clubs over the years and are just as passionate as I am, if not more. Growing up in a club environment, if you've done so yourself, you know how connected you are to that. And that's just something that in this project, we want to see continue. We want our next generations to feel just as connected as we do on a daily basis. You can't walk down to our supermarket without seeing someone with one of the jerseys on and you know, a little glint and you're like, hey, because you do have that connection within your community. We recognise that it can't come down to just us three clubs, so we have been actively checking out who else might have an interest and need a home. So as you would have seen in our notes, we have been talking to powerlifting, we've got basketball interested, failing, which you're probably thinking, what is that? That's medieval sword fighting. Yeah. Yeah. Hey, if they need a home and it doesn't correspond with our seasons, we're happy to share. So that's kind of who we are. How come we've kind of ended up where we are? And I guess I'd probably just want to touch on, why do we feel that we're deserving? Because we acknowledge that this is an amazing opportunity for clubs out there. The fact that there are funds to tap into like this, that too is like, no, it's unheard of. This wasn't something you could do 10, 20 years ago. So we're in a very lucky space and time to be able to be sitting here and asking for this. The reason that we feel that we are deserving is because we have done our homework. Yes, we do tick the boxes, but we recognise that what we're doing is we're contributing to our community in a way that's going to be long-lasting. I know that I've grown up in this space and, you know, I know what the history was back in the days of our parents playing and being out there representing our community. And we just want the next generation to have that and we know that we're not going to do that as individual clubs. We need to pull our resources, get smarter and head in that direction. We also have done a few bit of work recognising that we actually weren't an entity until two weeks ago. We as a project team realised actually we don't need to wait around for a name to identify who we are. So as of last season, our junior club conveners got together and thought, well, what could they do to help out our community? So one of the things that they did, which was a great initiative, was they thought, let's remove what barriers we think that kids and families might come across. And one of those was cost. So what we did in that case was they found it in terms of it being somewhat cost neutral, it wasn't going to cost too much, we actually offered out that if you signed up for one sport, that would continue to pay for you for the other sport in a financial year. So if you sign up to play softball, you can sign up and play rugby and it's all just one fee. So we're seeing some of those cost-effective, you know, options coming through that we can offer our community. Yes, selfishly, we're getting people through the door and we get to share our sport with them, but you know, those are memories that you can't take away from somebody. And those are the things that we really want to share with our community and impart onto them. I guess also we have been actively seeking out our partners, so recognising that the Miramar bid are quite a vocal group, so we've been making sure that we've been keeping in contact with them and we plan to do more of that, just to seek out who else might want to discuss options with us, recognising that we do want to have a hard floor gym within our space. So we totally can see that that's going to be a really utilised space throughout the community. I suspect we'll probably be fending people off to some degree. So we'll have to get smart about how we operate that. But schools definitely, the businesses definitely, and we recognise in ourselves that we're a part of the pillar of the Miramar Mutukarangi area and we just really want to continue on that journey. And to do that, we feel that having a building in place that meets all our needs, means that I can get my mam in a wheelchair up to the club rooms, that would really tick those boxes. So we can actually get on and do what we want to do.
Thank you so much. What an energising presentation and well done. Because it's not easy running all these different codes under one club. So I know it's got a huge amount of effort's gone into it. So thank you so much and thank you for your energy and enthusiasm this morning as well. It's infectious and yeah, I don't think there's any questions, but we've definitely heard you. Thank you so much for coming in.
Right, thank you.
And do we have Kate Scarlett and Marcus Segura from Wellington Community? Ah, great. Come up to the table. Morina, it's great to have you here. Now, you've also got 10 minutes and if you'd like to leave some time for any questions that arise, please do feel free. Thanks very much.
Push to talk, sorry. The lawyer can't read apparently. So first off, I'd like to apologise on behalf of Kate Scarlett. She can't be here because she's sick. Unfortunately, she's the one with the people skills, so you're stuck with me.
You're doing alright.
I've prepared a PowerPoint presentation. Is there any chance we can pull that up? Perfect. Oh no. I did not do that. That was not me. I would, I would never. Anyhow, everyone, yes, my name's Marcus Aragá. I'm the Housing Community Lawyer, the one and only unfortunately Housing Community Lawyer at Community Law Wellington and Hutt Valley. We've put in an application to try and get some more funding so that we could have multiple Housing Community Lawyers. So the purpose of this presentation is to just speak to our proposal and why we think it's necessary. So is there a but? Oh, will this do the next line? There we go. Oh God. Sorry, no, no. Whoever prepared this presentation, I think, is having some fun with me. So anyway, just about us, I'm sure most of you know about Community Law already. I don't mean that as a humble brag, but just because we're the people who do that. So akopapa is those with the least should have the same, if not better, access to justice than those with the most. We achieve this through free legal advice sessions where clients can come in. We don't means test anyone. Literally anyone can walk in the door and receive some legal advice or at the very least information. We do these with specialist sessions that range across a variety of different legal areas. We also release publications such as the Community Law Manual and just little bits of information for people to help understand their legal rights. We also do education, so we'll present people. I do a lot of talking to people about their rights as renters. And then finally, we do ongoing advocacy and representation. So we're active across a wide range of law, including employment, welfare, immigration, family and tenancy, which is what I'm here to talk to you all about today. We currently offer a tenancy advice session every Monday in our Polneki office. It's very busy. I supervise and give advice on that session. It's one of our most in-demand areas of law. And it's, I mean, there's a few reasons to that. I guess it's open on the facts at the moment that there's somewhat of a housing crisis going on at the moment and people need legal support. So what this proposal is about is it's not anything revolutionary. In fact, in 2019, the Hutt City Council funded us to establish a specialist housing advice and advocacy service. So before then, I didn't have a job. So they hired me to run that service and to set it up. So we've done that before and we're going to talk a bit about what that looked like and the success of that and why we want to implement this in Wellington as well. Oops. So the Hutt City Council gave us a humble $80,000 per year for 2.5 years to establish the service. This involved hiring a full-time specialist tenancy lawyer, me, supervision from a senior lawyer, some administrative support, about five hours a week, and then promotional materials like pamphlets, brochures, we got like an 0800 number and stuff like that. And the Hutt City Council have been so pleased with us that they've proposed to fund the project for another 10 years and increase our funding by $10,000 per annum. So in the Hutt, we do a weekly specialist legal advice session, much like the one in Wellington, although we didn't have one in the Hutt at that time. But the important thing, or at least what I'm most passionate about, is the fact that I get to provide dedicated, ongoing advocacy and representation to clients who are experiencing housing hardship. And this includes legal representation through the tenancy tribunal, sometimes the district court, if I'm lucky. So what we also do is support other community organisations in the housing space. So this is extremely beneficial to lower Hutt because I'm functionally in-house counsel for a whole bunch of community organisations that would not have the budget for legal advice. So I have actually countless amounts of social workers, support workers, all types of kaimahi who contact me when their clients have a legal query or something else. And I make a really big effort to foster that kind of relationship. And then there's also stuff like in February, we had big changes to the Residential Tenancies Act. So I did a lot of work to make sure that the social workers and the housing advocates out there knew what these changes meant for them in their Fi order. So last year, which was the first year that we had our service launched, and that was a bit of a rough launch thanks to a little pandemic, but other than that, we managed to get through to 228 people. That is including the people, so if one person comes in, but we have three tamadiki and their partner, then we're including that as well. In terms of individual visits, I think I saw about 100 clients. Around half of those received ongoing legal representation or advocacy. That's substantially higher than other areas of law. I believe that tenancy law in particular has a really high demand for ongoing support because these issues don't just disappear. It's never, well, sometimes it is a yes or no question, but more often than not, there's a root issue that needs to be sorted out. And it can very quickly kind of blow up in everyone's face with some sort of legal proceedings being initiated or anything like that. If there's an issue between a tenant and their landlord, sometimes that issue will be ongoing for quite a while. So the service has steadily grown with more people helped every quarter than the last. So we're just seeing a very linear growth of people using our service. And I do just want to go through some client feedback. I don't want to read this all out to you just because we're short on time, but there's some very good ones, some good stuff in here. Basically, the consensus from our clients is one, they are extremely thankful because this stuff is extremely stressful, difficult to navigate. And just generally, it's a really unpleasant experience to be in some sort of housing hardship. And I believe that our service can really, really help people through that. I will just read my favourite feedback, which I feel like some people are murmuring about. "God was very happy when he sent us to you that day. I hope to see you again to bring you the most delicious food and kebabs. Thank you very much for everything and for your support." That's from a client who was just treated despicably by his landlords, a recently resettled refugee who were able to go to the tenancy tribunal on his behalf and get a really good outcome for him. Yeah. No, yeah, I have to go to Auckland for that, but I will one day. Although we have weird legal obligations in terms of accepting gifts from clients. But if there was ever a time that I'd breached my obligations, maybe it's for that kebab. So finally, we got feedback from community organisations. Like I said, I put a lot of effort into maintaining these relationships. That's not just benevolent, it also helps us because we recognise our strengths and our weaknesses. I'm not a social worker, I'm not a mental health support worker. So we can cover this area, which is really undeserved, which is legal support for these people. But we work really closely with social workers who can do the regular wraparound support and all of that stuff. So we see ourselves as one piece of the puzzle and that piece of the puzzle in Wellington is unfortunately missing. I would appreciate it if you guys have the time to read through this feedback, but I'm not going to read it all out because I have a monotonous voice and it's not very fun. So the need to expand our service.
Maybe if you could just wrap up because we have come to the end of our 10 minutes.
Oh, yeah, sure. All right, this is the perfect one to end on. So currently, we offer a busy legal advice session every Monday evening. We're currently resourced to provide the Wellington community with initial legal advice and as my capacity allows some ongoing support for Wellington-based clients. However, there is a need for more. Through our service, we know firsthand that people need both legal advice and ongoing support. We've covered some of this, but we aren't resourced for all of that. We know we can do more for people suffering from housing hardship. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming in and thank you for your responsiveness to the council when discussing this issue. I do just have a couple of questions.
Of course.
The one is that one of the, part of the background to this service was that Renters United ran a very effective campaign at the last local body election, asking candidates to sign up to whether they would support the service being run. And so they really, so obviously that's the sort of, the beginning of a great partnership with community law, which I think will be approved today. And I guess I'm just checking that you are happy to sort of work with Renters United more on this and potentially they're even considering some kind of formalising of the relationship with you, just to make sure that they can feed into their advocacy work and also probably their next election campaign. But I know they were very keen and I think there's been some discussions already.
Absolutely. I'm a member of Renters United in my own personal capacity. So yes, without doubt, we'll be working with Renters United. We need to iron out the specifics of that, but we have, yeah, without hesitation, we would jump on that.
Yeah, no, excellent. And my other question was just around the extent to which the advocacy role goes into the tenancy tribunal where possible. And also to the district court. Because obviously we want, we want the actual advocacy and representation for renters, not just information. So can you just expand on how that works? Because you mentioned that you occasionally go to the district court and I just kind of, we want, we want a strong advocacy service. So just can you comment on that aspect?
Absolutely. Thank you. So in terms of the tenancy tribunal, there's no guaranteed right of representation. What the requirement legally is that there's a significant disparity between the party's ability to present their case or the amount exceeds $6,000. I personally will go and apply for, to represent everyone that I can in terms of my capacity. That is, in my view, the priority because they're not going to go, most people will not go through legal aid. It's extremely difficult to find a civil legal aid provider. And it's also financially, it's just, it's not accessible. So the, you know, focusing back to our akapapa, this area of tenancy tribunal representation, that is something where those with the least just don't have access. So in my view, that is the priority of the service.
Now, that's so reassuring and fantastic. Thank you so much. And just to be clear, you only represent renters, not landlords?
Yes.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
Thanks so much.
Unequivocally.
Thanks so much for coming in. That's awesome. Cheers.
Thanks for having me.
Fabulous. And I think that's the end of public participation. Yeah, thank you all for coming in. We will just then move on to, now we're just going to reorder the agenda a bit. So we're going to do, first, we're going to do the CH Izzard bequest recommendations. Then we're going to do the Arts and Culture Fund, which, so the Izzard bequest, councillor Matthews will introduce, the Arts and Culture Fund will be next, councillor Foon will introduce that. Then we'll do the Building Resilience Fund and the advice on it, both of which will be introduced by councillor Pannett. And then finally, we'll do the Social Recreation Fund. So just sort of reordering the agenda a bit. So I'll hand over to councillor Matthews to introduce the CH Izzard bequest recommendations.
Yes, very briefly, we have recommendations of support for, one, two, three, four organisations to the tune of $17,000. Councillor Fitzsimons always asks me to introduce Izzard because he comes from my ward, or came from my ward. So there's the local connection with Ortaori Wilton area. And I just wanted to quickly note, it's great organisations and work that we're supporting with this, with these small allocations on the sort of education kind of side of things for young people. And particularly, I think I want to note, as someone who's very passionate about the rights of disabled people, to fully participate in all that our city has to offer, the support for Special Olympics and Star Jam, for both sort of sporting and cultural activities and participation for people with intellectual disabilities. So that's really exciting to see. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Matthews. Do I have a second, dear? Councillor Day, thank you. Is anyone, would you like to speak? Anyone? Councillor Foon.
Kyura, and just acknowledging, I just think the officers have done a really great job on allocating, yes. And particularly, I don't know, I know we're not allowed favourites, but I know that Star Jam does such an amazing job for the community and the people that participate in that. So yeah, gives me warmness inside to know that we're looking after these organisations.
Thank you, councillor Foon. Councillor Matthews, would you like to write a reply?
Sorry that I didn't thank officers. Thank you, officers.
No problem at all. Cool. Thanks, everybody. Well, now the motion's been moved and seconded. I'll put that, all in favour, press one. If you're against, press two. And that's carried. Now we'll move on to the Arts and Culture Fund and I'll ask councillor Foon to introduce that paper.
Kyura, yes, it is a pleasure to introduce the Arts and Culture Fund. Particularly, just want to thank our officers for the work they do and the relationships they have with the community. And while I want to acknowledge that our cup is roughly a third full in this case, I think that this highlights the opportunity we've got ahead of us with Tiaraoteni. And I think just getting a bit broader, that, just reading our Smart Capital vision, that we're a people-centred city that contributes to healthy, vibrant, affordable and resilient communities. And I think what I'm hearing from our creative community, that that does not align with where many of them are feeling they're at the moment. So while, as I said, it's great that we can make a cup third full in this case, but there's a request from many that we need to do a lot more. So I am pleased to bring what we can today, but really looking forward to what our, what this will look like in the future, hopefully.
Thank you, councillor Foon.
Can I just particularly acknowledge the Girls' Rock Camp, the Project Fashion Limited, and I can't see the one about stitching and strathmore, but that would be awesome. And loving the senior citizens. Are they, Health and Happiness Association? I might try and belong to that earlier.
We can all get behind. Yes, later. And do I have a second, dear? Councillor Day, would you like to speak? Are there any other speakers? All right. Okay, that's been moved and seconded. All those in favour, please press one. And if you're against, please press two. Cool, now we'll move on to the two papers, but we will take them separately. The Building Resilience Fund, Grant Round Two of Two. And just to say that I've had some discussion with councillor Pannett and we've changed the recommendation here to send the Soroko Apartments to a committee of the whole, just because it's very near the threshold for the delegation for this committee. And my feeling was that there was a bit of uneasiness around this one, including from people who aren't members of the Grants Committee. So it felt like the responsible thing to refer that to a committee of the whole. But I'll ask councillor Pannett to introduce the whole paper.
Thank you, councillor Fitzsimons. And it does give me pleasure to introduce this paper. I'd like to thank officers for the significant amount of work undertaken to get this through. So as you know, former mayor Justin Lester and I put this up in 2019 to help owners of non-heritage listed earthquake-prone buildings with the process of strengthening, given the city is at high risk of significant earthquakes and has a large number of unstrengthened buildings. So this obviously is the third round, I think, and we've got some progress going, which is really pleasing to see. In terms of Soroko, look, I'm happy to delay it, but appreciate the advice from Mr Farah that there is an intent to strengthen the building and it does meet the criteria, but it is a significant amount of money. So I think it makes sense. And also from my perspective, will be a useful opportunity for the whole of council to get an oversight of some of the issues that owners of earthquake-prone and leki buildings are facing in our city. So that will be helpful. These people, all the applicants meet the criteria of the fund. You may have seen the article in the paper today about how Mr McCormick had already done some strengthening or a previous owner had done strengthening and now is having to do that again, which is something that we obviously want to avoid happening into the future. And is difficult, given the building code does change, well, not regulate, but is likely to change at some point in the future as we learn more about the risk of earthquakes. I acknowledge that there is some concern from the Grants Committee about allocating money to private landowners. But for me, the public policy justification is that when we have strong buildings, we are all, we are all much safer. It does good for our reputation as a good city to live in and also means that it gives confidence that over time that our city will become more resilient and people can invest in buildings which may have some earthquake issues. So I think when the government put the legislation through, there was never any understanding that the costs of strengthening would go as high as they have. And so that's why some people just need some help. These are not wealthy people who are trying to benefit from the rate payers. They're just having to do some work and... They're just having to do some work and getting some help, a small proportion of the money. And we know from the Built Heritage Incentive Fund that it does work because we're getting buildings off the earthquake prone building list. And saying that, I understand that this matter will come back before another committee, which is fine. And I, I'm not going to do this today, but I possibly would like some more advice from the planning team about aligning this fund to planning for growth so that we are investing in the right buildings. And my preference is personally that we do concentrate on multi-use buildings or residential ones because that's where the really, really, really hard issues are, where the costs have just got so high that it is very difficult for owners. And as the paper notes, of course, that this fund is complementary to the government loan scheme for owners of apartment buildings. And we are, of course, looking at our own loan scheme too, which will be of assistance to fund the majority of the costs. So look forward to, any questions or debate? Kia ora.
Cool. All right, I'm going to second this. And I would just like to start by thanking the staff and councillor Pannett for the work that has gone into this. And I guess this is the last round under this fund in this financial year. And I think as we go into the long-term plan, I think it's wise to pause and consider the future and how we want that to be. So for me, these applications have given rise to questions about whether this is really the best and most appropriate use of public money at this time. Because the reality is that these grants are a very small amount that doesn't really make a difference in the overall scheme of the work that needs to be done. And they seem poorly targeted to me. And that's not to say that this work isn't important or that our city isn't facing many challenges with buildings that we know need some work. But this amount of money that is allocated to each one is a drop in the bucket compared with the huge amount of money needed. And I would prefer that we consider this funding going into a council advisory service that could provide the wide range of building owners who are facing really difficult circumstances and difficult legislation to navigate and a difficult process to go through with the kind of advice and support that would help them navigate these systems. And I think by doing that, we'd also build up an internal expertise and capability which would help us not just in how we deal with those building owners, but help us face the many challenges across the city. And I absolutely agree with councillor Pannett's point about government. We are going to need to see a change in the requirements from government. We don't even have the industry available to deliver the work within the timeframes. So I would prefer that our energy went into making sure government change the expectations, but also in developing our own internal advisory and expertise for all building owners who are facing very, very challenging circumstances with earthquake strengthening. So I guess I just want to use this opportunity to say that I'm sceptical that $10 million for the Building Heritage and Built Heritage Incentive Fund and the Building Resilience Fund over the next 10 years is a good use of ratepayers' money. I'm not sure that it is. But obviously, those questions and those decisions are not for today or for this committee. But I just wanted to kind of outline that. And I'm happy to support these ones here because we have set up the fund, we do have the criteria. And I welcome the Soroko Apartments being discussed by a committee of the whole because it is very close to the threshold of our delegation. And I know that there is some concern among councillors around whether that's really the best use of, of public money. So with that, I'll just ask if there's anyone else who wants to speak? No? All right, well, all those in favour, please, oh, sorry, you have a write a reply. You absolutely will want it.
Yeah, yeah. No, no, I just wanted to thank you for your constructive comments and I do appreciate that. And look, I think just around the advisory service, look, there's a couple of issues around that. I agree, I think you make a point about increasing our capacity to help with a whole lot of building issues, so earthquake, leaky, climate change issues and affordability and green building. So there's a lot of issues. And saying that, I think the government should not be allowed to be let off the hook. They need, they should actually be funding this. You know, they put this legislation in place and part of the reason, it was incredibly poor public policy. They did not consider how all this work would be paid for. We've got the most radical strengthening legislation in the world and they just didn't put the money in. So they need to play their part and absolutely agree about the capacity. We need lots and lots of workers to build houses and water infrastructure and to help with the strengthening work as well. Look, as I said in my introduction, I think it is working to some extent in that it is helping owners, particularly with the BIF, to get off the list, which is what we want them to do. And this money was specifically targeted to an area where we could help, which was around, you know, the detailed design. But anyway, thank you for the debate. And look, I will, I think there needs to be some further discussions with officers about bringing an overall paper about just how, how we resolve these issues so that we don't just, just keep having these concerns, we just need to settle them. Because as you know, I'm incredibly concerned about the fact we've got six years to, for the city to strengthen over 200 buildings and I just don't think it's going to happen. So we need to do some more work around that. But again, I do appreciate your constructive contribution there. Thank you.
Lovely. All right, we'll vote. All those in favour, press one. Press two if you're not. Thank you, everyone. And we might just move on to the next paper, which is the advice on the Building Resilience Fund. And we have just, oh, sorry, we just, we want to change this to just, actually, let's break for morning tea and we'll fix the recommendation up as we're doing that. Thanks, everybody.
It's funny. And also, like, so was he even new with it? And recorded all whether Hattie comes. Right on the side of the contract. So I believe some. Yeah. Yeah. You used to have those tins there. Yeah, that's right. I mean, dogs. Like, I'm like, I'm. It comes through a place or two, I get it.
Well, there you go.
I was like, you know, this.
They have a good job?
Yeah. Yeah. I was trying to ask, like, I was. Why are you?
They told me we've written it. That's what we know. But this committee always, we think, but what I said to them was, it's about flagging it for, you know, in three years' time when you come there. We told you that it costs more and now, you know, you're in a position where you can't make it. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I think that that's what.
That's quick.
A long game. Yeah, so exciting.
Blue was a little bit like, oh, that's.
Yeah. I feel we're always going to make it if I live in that.
Yeah, like, I've lived in these ones at work.
Yeah.
Have we told you?
Yeah.
I know. Every time I go home, it has to be often for these.
Yeah. Early in the morning. Yeah, but I don't actually want to watch. I'm doing it. Yeah. So I think it'll be with a certain risk. Do you know what time I'm going by this? So. Trying to do this. Yeah. I was assuming that it would be. Was it? You can check. Yeah. Let's find out. Oh, the one where they said about, oh, because, oh, yeah, no, I did read that. That was quite good. Yeah, yeah. I forget to be specific. But, you know. But I'm just a very anti-position. So I was going to replace that, so it was like. I was a fourth and I was like, no, I'm not going to say that because. Well, I do hope, you know, it's, so a lot of people. But, yeah. But, yeah. Do you like the organisation of how to? Yeah, we're, we're going. I go, I think I'll be able to do that. Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so that's maybe a long time. So when I was, we used to, we could do, yeah, so making sure that. I was like, yay, because we didn't leave to communicate and work for Hattie Council. We just signed it. But I left before he was employed and like, that's just that. So it's nice to see you come to fruition and see him be like, yes, I've heard people. It's like, yeah, that's really nice. Yeah. Is it hitting or not? Okay. Yeah. Yeah, 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 yeah. And I think also, what's going to, like, actually, we can. No, I can do it. I don't need to not, I don't need to do it, but I want to. Yeah. What time do you have about? Okay. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I think also, what's going to, like, actually, we can. No, I can do it. I don't need to not, I don't need to do it, but I want to. Yeah. What time do you have about? Okay. Yeah. Yeah. I'd like to invite councillor Pannett to introduce the paper on entitled advice on the Building Resilience Fund. Sorry if you've got peer. Take your time. I'll just note while you get time to chew in is that we've just changed the recommendations that we're asking you to vote for to, that we note the following options. So it just leaves it open and we don't raise any issues with delegations and it means the work can carry on. We're not going to put any referral and we're just going to note these options because just with upcoming decisions with the LTP and others, we can always bring a paper later if we need to. So we're just going to note this work that's been done. And also, a lot of it has, the issues around some of the advice we asked for have been answered in other grants. So I'll hand over to councillor Pannett.
Well, thank you again councillor Fitzsimons for your constructive approach to this. It's much appreciated. And I think when we put that amendment through in December, you know, we were asking some really important questions, you know, around the advisory service for renters and around Amari Development Fund, which would be fantastic, and around how we support owners with resilience challenges. So I think we've just had that discussion that it just might be better to note the options at the moment. But I've talked to councillors, Day and Paul, about how we sort of start that process for looking at further advice to the relevant committees, planning and the social, cultural and economic committee. So I think we're, we're starting on that process. We've had a couple of meetings now about the Amari Development Fund. We will get some further advice on that and we'll, you know, go through obviously a really good process around that. And as I said in my previous speech, just, we do need to look at the Building Resilience Fund, at least from my perspective, around improving the criteria. But that, you know, again, there may be some more fundamental debate on that. So I'm very happy with the way this has been left, but we will continue work. Kia ora.
Thank you. Councillor Day, you have a second? And would you like to speak now?
Kia ora. Thank you for the mahi that's gone on in the background to try and sort of grapple with the huge opportunities that all of these options provide and they're all really important. I think probably just the thing I'd like to reflect on, on the previous paper we saw and heard about the challenges with the size of money that we're talking about and the size of the issue that we're trying to solve. And so I think it's really important that in some ways, we've brought a few issues together, but actually bringing them together doesn't always help because it's over such a small amount of money. But I definitely support this, having going away for more work. From the Amari Development funding side, as I say, I don't think it would necessarily be enough money. And I'm not overly comfortable with it being transferred out of Building Resilience Kopapa into Amari Development. I think the Building Resilience Kopapa is really important and we need to explore what we can do with that. And then potentially, it would need to be a separate funding bid for Amari Development. And also I think when it comes to Amari Development, we need to understand the needs better. At the moment, we've sort of got a few ideas of what it could be, but we actually need to talk to the community and with Manu Fenua about what the opportunities would be. And I'm aware that we've got our Manu Fenua reps joining us soon and I'm very reluctant to hand them a list of things that we want to work through straight away. I think we need to allow some time to do that properly, otherwise we will scare people off on day one. And I also, I guess as part of that Amari Development Fund, I would like us to explore how we can do the decision-making around that differently. So we need to really think about what that would look like, whether we're going to do Wananga Marai style decision-making or something. And I think that needs good consideration and time. So I feel like possibly the Amari Development Fund, although I'd like to say let's set it up right now and have money, I think maybe the annual plan might be the best time to aim for. To get something that's a really good, solid proposal together would be really, really welcome and exciting. So I think this is a really good idea and I think, yeah, going away and doing some more work would be good. And I really do support looking at how we can build some internal capabilities to be able to support community with grappling with the resilience issues, as we all have been saying. And I think we're all speaking on the same page when we say, you know, the government really does have to step up here, but what can we practically do as a council? Us throwing small amounts of ratepayer money at it is really not the solution. I think that the community needs, they need us to be strong advocates, but also to be able to provide some practical knowledge and support on how to work through these processes because it's really complicated for people.
I'd like to invite councillor Pennett to introduce the paper on entitled advice on the Building Resilience Fund. Sorry if you've got peer, take your time. I'll just note while you get time to chew is that we've just changed the recommendations that we're asking you to vote for to that we note the following options. So it just leaves it open and we don't raise any issues with allegations. And it means the work can carry on. We're not going to put any referral and we're just going to note these options. Because just with upcoming decisions with the LTP and others, we can always bring a paper later if we need to. So we're just going to note this work that's been done. And also, a lot of it has, the issues around some of the advice we asked for have been answered in other grants. So I'll hand over to councillor Pennett.
Well, thank you again councillor Fitzsimons for your constructive approach to this. It's much appreciated. And I think when we put that amendment through in December, you know, we were asking some really important questions, you know, around the advisory service for renters and around a Māori development fund, which would be fantastic. And around how we support owners with resilience challenges. So I think we've just had that discussion that it just might be better to note the options at the moment. But I've talked to councillors Day and Paul about how we sort of start that process for looking at further advice to the relevant committees, planning and the social, cultural and economic committee. So I think we're starting on that process. We've had a couple of meetings now about the Māori Development Fund. We will get some further advice on that and we'll, you know, go through obviously a really good process around that. And as I said in my previous speech, just we do need to look at the Building Resilience Fund, at least from my perspective, around improving the criteria. But, you know, again, there may be some more fundamental debate on that. So I'm very happy with the way this has been left, but we will continue work. Kia ora.
Thank you. Councillor Day, you have a second? And would you like to speak now?
I'm Kia ora. Thank you for the mahi that's gone on in the background to try and sort of grapple with the huge opportunities that all of these options provide and they're all really important. I think probably just the thing I'd like to reflect on on the previous paper we saw and heard about the challenges with the size of money that we're talking about and the size of the issue that we're trying to solve. And so I think it's really important that in some ways we've brought a few issues together, but actually bringing them together doesn't always help because it's over such a small amount of money. But I definitely support this having going away for more work. From the Māori development funding side, as I say, I don't think it would necessarily be enough money. And I'm not overly comfortable with it being transferred out of Building Resilience Kopapa into Māori Development. I think the Building Resilience Kopapa is really important and we need to explore what we can do with that. And then potentially it will need to be a separate funding bid for Māori development. And also I think when it comes to Māori development, we need to understand the needs better. At the moment, we've sort of got a few ideas of what it could be, but we actually need to talk to the community and with Manu Fenua about what the opportunities would be. And I'm aware that we've got our Manu Fenua reps joining us soon and I'm very reluctant to hand them a list of things that we want to work through straight away. I think we need to allow some time to do that properly. Otherwise, we will scare people off on day one. And I also, I guess as part of that Māori Development Fund, I would like us to explore how we can do the decision making around that differently. So we need to really think about what that would look like, whether we're going to do Wananga Marai style decision making or something. And I think that needs good consideration and time. So I feel like possibly the Māori Development Fund, although I'd like to say let's set it up right now and have money. I think maybe the annual plan might be the best time to aim for, to get something that's a really good solid proposal together would be really, really welcome and exciting. So I think this is a really good idea and I think, yeah, going away and doing some more work would be good. And I really do support looking at how we can build some internal capabilities to be able to support community with grappling with the resilience issues as we all have been saying. And I think we're all speaking on the same page when we say, you know, the government really does have to step up here. But what can we practically do as a council? Us throwing small amounts of rate payer money at it is really not the solution. I think that the community needs, they need us to be strong advocates, but also to be able to provide some practical knowledge and support on how to work through these processes because it's really complicated for people. And as you said councillor Pennett, a lot of these people are, they're just, you know, building owners trying to and often trying to run a business and don't necessarily have the time or the expertise to be able to deal with these issues. So, yeah, look forward to seeing where it goes. I think there's some really awesome opportunities here. So thank you very much for working through that councillor Pennett. Because I actually think where you've started and where you're getting to, it's just, it's really good that you've stuck true to your values and kept pushing hard and, you know, listening and seeing what's happening and responding to that. So thank you.
Are there any other speakers? Would you like a run of the play?
Briefly, councillor Day, I'd just like to acknowledge your graciousness in saying about taking money from one pot to another. Because actually, as we have acknowledged many times now, Māori have been not been given the resources and the powers that they need. And so that's why I'm a very strong supporter of a fund. And it of course should be in the millions, not, not just even half a million. So I really appreciate that. And I do appreciate the feedback that I'm getting. We've had some reasonably robust conversations, but I find that really valuable and am taking that on board. And, yeah, really excited to see what advice comes from staff around the Māori Development Fund or whatever it ends up being. I think we could do some amazing things there and it would be a really fantastic way of meeting our treaty obligations. So Kia ora for that.
Thanks, everybody. I'll now put the motion. Please vote, press one if you're in favour or two against. And that's carried. All right. Now, we're going to move on to the Social and Recreation Fund. But before we discuss that, we've just got a presentation from Manda about Timahana. So invite Manda to the table. Thank you.
Kia ora, everybody, and thanks for the opportunity to share with you today. I wanted to take this chance to talk to you about Timahana, partly because it's 2021 and the term of the strategy has come to an end. But also because there are some real impactful things and decisions that have been made at this table that I thought would be nice to kind of complete that feedback loop in when it comes to how we implement the strategy itself. So I've got my little dude. I do, but I can try and bring it closer. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah, that's fine.
Cool. Awesome. I'm going to look at my notes too because I don't want to forget anything. So there's three kind of high level goals of Timahana, to stop homelessness happening, to deal with homelessness quickly and to stop it happening again. And a core to that, those three goals is recognising that housing is a basic human right and that people's tinoranga tira tanga is at the centre of their journey out of homelessness. So giving them the opportunity to take control and be empowered to move from a state of housing deprivation into a permanent tenancy. So just wanted to kind of reflect back on the core principles of the strategy. But really, I want to talk about what it allows in terms of the mahi that we do. So we have formed, sorry, a kind of a governance structure for the mahi that we do under the Timahana Strategy. So there is the NDT Group, which is out on the ground staff. They work with clients directly and that's cross sector group. So council facilitates that conversation with our partners in community and government, parole officers, police officers, social workers, our colleagues in MSD and Kainga Orra. And then a similar group that is the Timahana Officers Group. So that's where we try and address some of the challenges and barriers at a more operational management level. And then finally, our Strategic Leadership Group, which was reformed at the end of 2020 with our Chief Operating Officer Claire at the helm, sharing the co-chairing of that Rupu with our Iwi partners. So that structure has allowed us to look at how we address homelessness at multiple levels, looking at both our operational, on the ground and strategic response. And obviously, the strategy itself is all about collaboration. It's all about partnerships. So it has allowed us, it's given us a mandate to work with our partners in the NGO, Iwi and central government space to facilitate those conversations and to progress our goals. Sometimes I think it's difficult as a council, when we're not a huge funder and we're not a huge service provider, to be able to figure out what our role is. But Timahana has made it really clear that our role is one of advocacy and facilitation and to call our partners to account when required as well. So being able to enhance the voice of our NGO sector and the people who are at risk of homelessness or are experiencing homelessness and be able to look at solutions at that kind of central government level. So we were able to, through a lot of the funding agreements, actually, the contracts that we have with our organisations that you've approved at this table, build in some stronger reporting, which has resulted in a really clear picture of our homeless whanau. So we understand who they are, why they've fallen into homelessness and what it would take to move them out of homelessness and acknowledging that we're in a housing crisis. So permanent tenancies aren't necessarily there. We understand what is required for these people and we're able to implement and influence decisions to align with those things. So having a clearer picture and a better understanding of our people has been a really valuable learning. I won't talk too much about COVID because I think we're kind of sick of it. But I think the main thing to note here is that it made it really obvious how vulnerable these people were and it was a catalyst for change. So we've seen huge increases in the numbers of people in emergency housing. But a lot of that has to do with the fact that rough sleeping and sleeping and, you know, cars and couches and things like that became unsustainable during lockdown. And so people moved from those environments into emergency or transitional accommodation. So we are seeing huge increases, but in some ways it is a positive thing because people are now on a continuum towards permanent housing. I wanted to highlight a couple of examples where the decisions made at this table in relation to the social and rent grants funding have really enabled us to implement change under the banner of Timahana. So Kahungunua Wana Services last year, as part of the extra funding that City Council voted to provide to NGOs under COVID recovery, were given money to purchase a mobile clinic. That clinic is about to be launched in June and it's going to happen at Tiaro Park. I'll make sure that you guys are all invited. And they have been contracted or requested by the Ministry of Health to, one of the first taskings will be to roll out COVID-19 vaccinations to people in emergency housing who are experiencing homelessness. So making sure that that's crucial, health services accessible to the people that may otherwise not reach them. So I wanted to link that back to the decision made here, you know, probably around a year ago today, around supporting that Kopapa and also acknowledging that Mark and some of the other team did heaps of work to broker co-funding because it wasn't just a city council funded project. We worked with DIA and Wellington Community Trust so that they could realise the full project. I'll talk briefly about the city mission, another Kopapa that this Rupu has approved funding for. And just noting the shift between the transient shelter model to a more transitional solution. So ensuring that those wraparound services are there and that anybody that comes into Te Pa'amaru on Taranaki Street is on a journey. They're there to think about their long term success, whatever that looks like for them. And helping them believe that there is, that success is possible and understanding what that journey might look like for them. And again, operational funding that was approved at this table has been able to influence that. And it's really exciting to see where that's going as well. And then I wanted to just touch on the assertive outreach program. Because we've heard about it already from our whanau at DCM, I won't go on and on about it. But I think that the question in my mind around this piece of work is what would we do without it? And I wanted to highlight how useful and important it is for council because we have an obligation to our retailers and our, you know, other members of the public, as well as to our homeless whanau and the people who are vulnerable. And in the work that I do and the work that my colleague Bobby does, we have to have those conversations with the retailers, with members of the public who are concerned, but also that impacted by homelessness on our streets as well. And being able to work closely with DCM means that we can respond to both sides. We can ensure that an empathetic, you know, wraparound service support is available. We can also reassure those partners that we're doing something and that we are proactive and looking after people on our streets. And I think that's my last one. Yeah. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I mean, yes. Thank you so much for that presentation. It's good to be, yeah, it's good to have that update. I just have a question about what, where to now with the strategy? So how, you know, when are we going to hear about the next steps?
Yeah. I won't get into too much detail, but Claire Richardson, Karepa and I, and Jenny actually, were out at Waifetumarai in April with Iwi partners around their, their goals of moving into, into housing solutions and wanting to push a Māori led response to the housing crisis. And when we had that conversation, we talked about potentially co-designing with our Iwi partners. So there's still work to be done on how that happens, but that's the direction that we're moving in.
Cool. And councillor Day?
So thank you so much. It's really good to see sort of how that all plays through. And really exciting to hear that Kahungunua just about ready to launch that service. It's so cool. I've got a question around the not criminalising homelessness. I'm really interested in that because it's so important. And I wonder what we're doing. Obviously, we're working closely with the police. But that has to be quite a deliberate process, doesn't it, to make sure that we are honouring that sort of approach?
Yeah, absolutely.
Things are happening to make sure that we're not following that line.
Well, I think one thing is that we haven't, at this table with our full council, we haven't voted to implement any bylaws that make homelessness illegal. So people are able to sleep on the streets if they need to sleep on the streets. For the most part, if you're sleeping in your car, there's no risk that you're going to be punished for that. I think that our relationships with the police are really constructive and everybody takes a whatever it takes approach. So we might share information about a vulnerable person and then think about a collective, cross sector response to looking out for that person. But, but police intervention or corrections kind of justice intervention is absolutely the last resort and only when the risk to that person or to others is so high that it can't be avoided. But ultimately, yeah, we want to, we want to be working from a harm reduction space and doing everything we can to support somebody rather than punish them for the situation they're in. Yeah.
Councillor Pennett?
So I was just wondering if you've, all the council officers have had a chance to reflect on the 2020 goal and what we can learn from that because we might have been a bit over, overly ambitious. Jenny, like I'm going to end it. We're going to end homelessness. And obviously, there have been some other things, as I said before, that have come into play. But, you know, we do want to end homelessness. So how do we set a realistic goal and timetable for doing that? And of course, also what is government doing enough to as well?
That's a lot of questions. Maybe Jenny has a view. I've only been at council since the end of 2019. So I wasn't here around the formation of Timahana, but maybe.
So Jenny, can we just get you to come to a?
Yeah.
Councillors, at the time, the Timahana was developed really a cross sector approach through government as well as community organisations. And at that time, that was a genuine belief that street homelessness specifically would be ended. There was acknowledgement, there was always a sort of a treadmill, you know, people came in and out of homelessness. But in general, at that time, there was a genuine belief that that would be the case. To have things in place so long term, street homelessness, non-recurring, would be in place by 2020. But of course, things have happened since then, housing shortage, COVID, change of social infrastructure as well.
Just because you and I have institutional knowledge, I know there was a report done in 2006, which said we needed more social housing and the council efforts was into upgrading our existing stock. So I guess the thing, the learning for me is about, yeah, when we get reports like that, then we need to do, even though there was some capacity issues, that we need to put that somehow into the planning process.
Yep.
Yeah, it needs to be really, really long term. And that's why, you know, even those asset management plans, you know, they become critically important.
Yeah, absolutely. And I definitely acknowledge that and that needs to be considered in the new strategy. I want to acknowledge though that even Natalia this morning, before she came to speak, mentioned to me that two people have been housed through city housing in the last week and the feedback from our partners in the NGO spaces that Wellington City Housing is doing more to support people out of homelessness through housing provision than our central government partners or other community housing providers. And the other thing just is that Ngat Kahunua Ki Purnuki, as a community housing provider, are taking on some of our properties and being able to use those or provide those to people as transitional or housing, permanent housing for people who have come through that housing first program. So there's some good stuff happening, but absolutely acknowledge that it needs to be part of the strategy going forward.
One more question. So, oh, it's good we've got Tom here. Yeah, just so at a really strategic level that we are learning from this, that we, when we do our long term plans, that we are thinking 30, 40, I'd rather think 100 years about making sure that we have got very robust planning in place. Okay, so that point's made. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Councillor Fohn?
Kia ora, Amanda, and thanks for, I hear you guys are doing it. It's amazing. And good to hear the story about city housing as well. I guess for me, I want to just understand a bit more about the business response. And I guess, yeah, just a general snapshot of how they are, how patient are they? Are we equipping them with what they can do? Like, yeah, just any, just a bit more feedback on the businesses.
I won't say that they're all one way or the other. Some are more empathetic than others. But we've, you know, there are business owners who really want us to be able to do something tangible and punitive. You know, they want, they want it to be illegal. They want it to be not okay that people can sleep outside of their shops. But what we have done is reiterated our approach, which is about harm reduction. It's about engaging with those people, getting to know them and figuring out what success looks like with them. And that's through our partnership with DCM, it's through our Hapaiake, our local host team, and through the work that Bobby does, coordinating the assertive outreach program. So sometimes we have to go down and ask people to move early on so that a shop can open, you know, without somebody in the doorway. And that's just the reality of it because we have to look after everybody's, everybody's needs and they need to be able to operate their business. But we always try and balance that and reiterate that we're not interested in punishing people for the situation they're in. Yeah.
Councillor O'Neill? Oh, sorry, did you have a?
I just wanted to get the sense, so are businesses supportive of our approach? Sometimes.
Sometimes. I'd say it's about 50/50.
Okay, good. That's good.
Yeah.
If I can just add something to that, councillors, we just had a really nice response around Tiara Park this week. I don't know, a month ago, one of the businesses there was very concerned and frustrated. But because of the work we've been doing there and particularly because the work DCM's been doing there as well and assisting people, we had a very nice response from this business owner to say how, what a change it was. And he was completely understanding of how our approach would work. So that was a really good turnaround and a very good approach, yeah.
All of those opportunities and engagements with people are opportunities for us to, to bring them along the journey and start to think more empathetically. And it's really nice when that, when that does happen.
And councillor O'Neill?
Kia ora, thank you, Manda, thank you, Jenny. I just have two partis. So the first one is around, since 2016, when Timahana was first released, the gaps in services might have changed or the framing might have changed. Would you be able to talk a little bit about maybe the way our, the way that we've been striving to end homelessness has maybe in a couple of years on, we've seen some more gaps?
For sure. So we didn't have housing first when the strategy was first formed. And so that's a new thing for Wellington and it's really successful to see that intensive and wraparound support for people that supports them from a place of street homelessness right through to sustaining a long term tenancy. So that's a big win. Central government's investing a lot more into this mahi than they were previously. But what we have been able to do through the data work and through the relationships that we have is understand where some of that unmet need is. And I think there's some gaps when it comes to mental health and addiction support. So there's some advocacy that can be done with our health providers. And I think also there is some systemic stuff around the way that people move in between government agencies, whether it's from corrections to MSD to police to Kainga Orra, just making. Just making sure that those agencies are working together and that, that people are not falling through the gaps. So that's where a lot of our efforts are going at the moment.
Cool. And then, yeah, just a second partis. So I'm really excited to see the Temahana strategic refresh. That's super cool. And I was just wondering, with an opportunity for a policy refresh, something I've been kind of missing in other sectors of council policy is that involvement and looking at the goals of Temahana. So like when we do planning for growth work or spatial plan work, and I was just wondering where you see the opportunity to work in some of these principles that we use in Temahana and the sector users to talk about housing need in Wellington?
Just on that, I can say that we are working closely with our spatial plan team and our district plan team and we're right embedded in there to make sure, thinking of people and the future of all community, including the street community is considered and how amenity as the city grows can continue to support that. So that is already happening and certainly with a refresh of the policy, that would be part of that.
Cool. All right. Well, thank you very much. I think you can tell by the number of questions that there's a lot of enthusiasm from councillors to be involved in this work and particularly in the lead up to the paper that I assume will be coming around the refresh and where we go from here. So thanks very much. And I just want to also, just before we get on to the Social and Recreation Fund, acknowledge councillor Paul and councillor Pennett for their commitment to the Grants Committee because this is their last meeting as members of it. So yeah, thank you so much. It's been a pleasure to have both of you around the table. And, and I don't think you'll find a better committee. We do all the good things here, so but. Yeah, you're wel-, you're wel-, you're welcome to come.
Acknowledge the excellent sharing in this committee too. So thank you for it.
All right. Now, we are going to get on to the Social and Recreation Fund. Councillor Pennett, do you want to go at this stage or you can go now if you wish. It's up to you. Oh, I thought you were going to miss the whole paper. Oh, okay. We'll just take, why don't we just take that separately and vote on it? If you're, it's up to you how you want to manage it, but I think that's sensible. Yep, sure. No problem. All right. No. There's, there's no way of taking it separately because there isn't a recommendation for it at this stage. Unless there was an amendment, there wouldn't be. It's up to you. I don't want to, yeah. It's up to you, councillor Pennett, how you wish to deal with your conflict. We're very happy to have a. Because there's no recommendation, there won't be a way to take it separately unless there is an amendment. All right. Well, thank you so much for your time on the Grants Committee and enjoy the rest of your day. Very good. All right. Well, it is now my pleasure to introduce the recommendations for the Social and Recreation Fund. And you'll see that there's some really important work that goes on across our community in Wellington reflected in these grants. And obviously, we can't give money to everyone who's asked, but I think you'll agree that there's a good combination of organisations who are dealing with providing services to vulnerable communities with the support of residence associations and also two very important ones around recommendations to the Social, Culture and Economic Committee around the renters advocacy service at Community Law and also the ongoing support for DCM. So I don't intend to go and end the allocation for the Sportsville partnership. And I think we heard very compelling submissions this morning from each of those organisations about the excellent work that they're doing in Wellington and also their commitment to building a strong relationship with the council. So do I have a second? Councillor Matthews, would you like to speak?
Kia ora, I just want to speak very briefly about the tenancy advocacy service and how essential this work is. And there's a real gap currently. And I know that people are, you know, tagging me in on their, you know, battles with landlords. And, you know, I have been referring to people to Community Law and, but I felt a little bit weird doing that when we weren't supporting their work directly in this area. So this is so needed in a time where there's a lot of housing shortage that people feel very unsafe to stand up for their basic rights to decent accommodation and just things like getting, getting bonds back and, you know, different, different kind of, there's a lot of chance, I think, about, you know, opportunities to, to gain extra, a bit of extra revenue off people or to not maintain their properties in, in the right way. So very excited that we're going to do this and play more of an active role. And I just wanted to say that also the, I thought the presentation from Community Law was fantastic and that work is sensational. I'm so happy that we're going to be doing more of it.
Councillor Fane.
Kia ora, councillor Matthews, I agree with all that you've said. So I won't, I won't repeat. But yeah, the, the presentation this morning was excellent. But what I did want to bring up today was, you know, creative thinking around solutions. So in this, I really want to thank councillor Fitzsimons for your leadership, you know, and around the renters' rights. And really, I know that you, you've been pushing for this and so it's been really good for me watching how this has transformed and now we've got a really great solution. And just really want to thank our team for working and knowing that there was a place that this could go and that it feels like there'll be a lot of winners from this outcome and hopefully there'll be a lot more tenants. So yeah, just thank you to everyone for, yeah, creative approach to finding a good solution for this. So thank you.
Excellent. Thanks so much. And I just want to pick up on the comments around the renters advocacy service. And obviously, that will go to council and we'll have an opportunity to, to, you know, speak to it again then and probably to formally launch it as well. And I guess I just, on that note, wanted to acknowledge Jenny Rains because it was this committee that said, we should do a renters advocacy service. We've been pushing for it for a long time. And Jenny's like, okay, let's make that happen. And that's not always the answer you get from council officers with all due respect. So it was fantastic that you just had this can-do attitude, like you saw a need, you saw that this committee wanted it and we found a way to get it happening really quickly. So I did just want to acknowledge that leadership and it will be among many things, a legacy of yours and everybody's at this council. All right. With that, I'd like to, oh, sorry, councillor, no, no, councillor O'Neill.
Can I, yeah, is that able? I don't know if I need to ask permission from the chair to talk? Having not been a member of Grants just yet, I just briefly wanted to talk to the fund that DCM has put forward and, and talk a little bit about some of the work going behind the scenes. Of course, we've heard from Natalia and Stephen here this morning as well. But just to thank, yeah, thanking Stephen, Natalia and Mark and Manda and Jenny and our Hapaiake, our local hosts that do the, the groundwork that isn't always very visible. And I wanted to acknowledge how essential the programme of work that DCM has been leading in our city and how, what a strength and how rich we are as a council to kind of have that partnership there. And so coming together over the, over many decades is really important as well. And I know that Claire Richardson, if she were here, she would be talking about the same things. The decades of success and collaboration have been really essential to this. And just in terms of renewing the funding for another three years, I know it's not going to be common practice for grants going forward, but I think just acknowledging as well that the taking your foot off the pedal is not really an option for a lot of the toma'i and the sustainable relationships is a really big part of that. And given that we need to be able to continue this work because the harm is, is very generational. And as we've seen over the last year and a half, different support providers coming together have been super important. And that programme has been, been really, really essential there. Some believe that we ended homelessness in COVID and others that were working closer to the ground knew that maybe a lot of those, those threads and those relationships that were keeping people in garages and houses became increasingly unsustainable. And so that's why we have a whole lot more people in emergency housing as well as the other flow and effects of COVID, like severe unemployment and a lot less money in the kitei. I just wanted to read a quote from the funding proposal that I believe was written by Manda in support of DCM. And it's just a quote about some of the service there. So the response and turnaround time from DCM's outreach team is phenomenal. They are quick, reliable and efficient in responding to requests for assistance. And Natalia and her team have been, have an enviable ability to understand the balance of toma'i needs with other members of the public, Wellington City Council staff and the business community. And I think that's really important and just kind of speaks to how valuable these relationships are and how lucky we are to have them. So I just wanted to pop into Grants today and one part to hear the update on Temahana, another part to chat with Stephen and his team as well. But, and then just to sort of shed some light on some of the work that's been going on as well.
Thanks councillor O'Neill. Councillor Day.
Oh, yeah. What an, what an amazing funding round to be focusing on. I was going to say, it's, it's been a really lovely uplifting morning hearing about the kopapa and the impact that it's having on the community. Councillor Fitzsimons and I were fortunate enough to go for a walk around with Natalia a few weeks back. And man, I just take my hat off to the mahi that she does. It's, it's absolutely impressive, hard, hard going. You don't know quite what you're going to experience when you go out on the street on any day. And she just does it with such fantastic positive energy. We're so lucky to have people in this city who, who value the mahi and, and do the mahi. So very happy to support that. But also just to our other grant recipients, you know, of the, the rest of the grants. I guess it's, it's a fairly tough round for the applicants because there were really good applications from many. I do just want to speak to the Changemakers Resettlement Forum and so I'm really pleased to see that that's getting a significant amount of funding there. I listened to Abraham Omar speak in the Tidgen Park community a few weeks back and was a really good grounding reminder of the challenge, challenges that refugees face in coming to New Zealand and particularly how hard it is at the moment with, you know, borders being so restricted. So it's really important that we are continuing to support our community as best we can. And also just want to acknowledge the ongoing amazing mahi of Kiwi community assistance who are getting food to so many people and also making sure that our food isn't wasted in this city. So they do an amazing amount of mahi across the city, but particularly in the Taupo community where I live. And we're really grateful for their ongoing commitment and support to, to all communities that they support. So yeah, very happy to support this paper. Thank you to the staff for the huge amount of work that's gone on in the background. Thank you.
Cool. And with that, now that it's been moved and seconded, and I had an interesting mid-writer reply, we will put it to a vote. Press one if you support and two if you don't. That's great. Thanks, everybody. And yeah, what a great meeting. Thanks for all your support. Now, just ask that we stand to say the closing kataki.